Good evening. At 6 o'clock, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with an invocation led by Councilmember Singh, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Thomas. Please rise as you're able.
Source of all strength and power, we ask that you pour out hope for those that are experiencing trauma and recovery from the climate disasters. We ask for hope and an end to the killing and suffering of all innocent lives here and everywhere. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, would you please call roll?
Councilman Fugit.
Here.
Councilwoman Helsley.
Here.
Councilwoman McKenzie.
Here.
Councilwoman Parker.
Here.
Councilwoman Roberto.
Here.
Councilwoman Singh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
And Councilwoman Thomas. Eight members present, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion on the minutes from the October 1st meeting?
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, are there any items to be withdrawn? Are there any items for postponement? Okay, are there any items requested to be added by motion? And there are no consent items, so we'll move right along to my report. I want to start by addressing a situation that council's very aware of because our whole city was very focused on incredibly tense situation that happened last week where we had to evacuate nearly 1,000 people and put our first responders and others in a very dangerous situation. As many of you know, Thursday afternoon, it was around 2 o'clock, we were notified that a steel box with nearly 500, I think over 500 sticks of dynamite, nearly 200 blasting caps, all tangled up with a mess of wires, was discovered at the CMC recycling plant, recycling area off Minders Avenue. The box was smoldering. It was smoldering after workers had attempted to open it using a blowtorch of some kind, I believe, and they didn't know the contents inside. That alone could have caused a serious explosion. They immediately called 911. Fire responded because they thought it was hazardous materials. As soon as they were aware that it was explosives, they quickly called our bomb squad from KPD and then ensued 36 hours of carefully coordinated emergency response. It was really something that we can all be proud of. Our bomb squad members were incredibly brave. They used our KPD robot and then we also were able to get mutual aid from Metro Nashville who had a bigger robot to help with the removal of the door. But the robot was not equipped to remove, extract the dynamite sticks from that tangled mess, so our bomb squad techs did it by hand. And I remember when Chief Noel told me that was going to happen, it really was a tense, tense time because we just didn't know what would happen. So I want to recognize publicly the efforts of the KPD bomb squad who removed this dynamite and did so at great personal risk. I want to recognize the Knoxville Fire Department members who were very close by to deal with medical issues or, you know, if a blast had occurred, they were right there. Our public service crews helped in myriad ways, closing roads, bringing in dump trucks filled with salt to block a potential blast if that had happened. Traffic engineering helped closing the roads. When we needed a place for evacuees to go who didn't have another option, ASM Global and the city staff at Howie Park opened up the Jacob Building. And of course, the American Red Cross helped with managing the about three dozen or so families that spent the night at the Jacob Building and all the next day. There were many, many businesses and people who helped with the evacuees, including neighborhood leaders who helped get the word out to members of the Lonsdale and Westview communities to make sure they understood the emergency nature of this evacuation. So I know a few of the responding City of Knoxville crew members are here tonight from police and fire. If you could stand, and if you're already standing, please raise your hands so we can give you a round of applause. It was really quite an impressive and scary thing, but I was shedding tears of relief once that the danger was out of, once we were out of danger. So we can't thank you enough. Anyhow, so really proud and grateful for their work. And now for something, a totally different type of item, but still very important to our community, is the Food Policy Council report. Kimberly Pettigrew, is Kimberly here? She's the Director of Food Systems at the United Way, and she is here with us to present something you have before you, this Healthy Communities Food Systems Report. And it takes a deep dive into an assessment of our food system and had contributions from more than 50 different, 60 individuals and organizations. And as you know, we have food inequities in our community. We have food deserts. And this report is available for us to read, but Kimberly's going to give us a brief overview in the next couple of minutes and then council members can follow up with her as needed. Kimberly, if you could state your name and address for the record briefly.
Hi, Kimberly Pettigrew, 2548 Heinz Creek Road, High School, 37754. Thank you, Mayor Kinkanen, for having us. The last time we were here for Food Policy Council was right after the COVID-19 pandemic, when we were able to share how we came together as a community to support the food needs of those during that time. We have, over the past two years, been leading a community food security assessment and planning process. We were able to engage in total more than 1,000 individuals through stakeholder interviews, surveys, and then we had eight community-based organizations leading that work. Those organizations were focused on either they were food insecure themselves or they were working for organizations targeting people more likely to experience food insecurity. So a big thing about the report, it's not really focused on hunger alone. It's focused on people's overall health and well-being. So you'll see information around mental health, transportation. We also have data around wealth, food entrepreneurship, and even trust in our community. And so this is a very brief introduction to some of that information. Our People's Food Plan is where we are rooted ourselves in right now. It is a big picture plan at this moment, and we're actually creating a monitoring and evaluation plan to be able to share with you all next year. If you open the packet at the beginning, there is an example of what that will look like with our most recent Community Garden Assessment. We actually have nearly 60 community gardens that are producing a significant amount of produce, and so we'll be supporting those organizations in that journey. One thing I would like to point out is we have already received significant grants to support this work, especially around food deserts, as Mayor Kinkanen mentioned. We received a Healthy Food Financing Grant in partnership with KCDC and Real Good Kitchen, and that is to build a pipeline of technical assistance as well as loans for groups that are focused on food enterprise and food retail. And it will be centered on groups that are historically disinvested. And so United Way will be leading that work, but it will be collective. My cards are in here. We are building an Esri Hub as well that will house the full data, and so we'll get that link to you all so you can see some heat maps. It has surveys broken down by zip code as well as the full survey results beyond what's just in the report. And so we'll be back next year with a lot more data around food systems for you all, and thanks.
Thank you so much. Now, a quick reminder about our Rules of Decorum. Those who wish to speak either to a specific agenda item or during public forums should sign up with the city recorder before 4:00 p.m. Please do not use profanity, and when speaking to specific agenda items, please remember to stay on topic. Robert's Rules of Order state that remarks must be germane to the question ahead of the assembly. That is, statements must have bearing on whether the pending motion should be adopted. Those who fail to adhere to these rules may be ruled out of order and asked to step away from the podium. For those who are listening, please note, you may not disrupt a public meeting from the audience. Those who do may be asked to leave. I appreciate in advance everyone's respect for these rules. That concludes my mayor's report. Are there any reports from council members? Vice Mayor Smith. Oh, Councilmember Thomas.
Yes, I want to echo the mayor's remarks about the situation that she very well described. The professional skill that it took to avert that calamity is wonderful, and it really prevented some things I wouldn't even want to imagine if all that had gone out over there. So I think all of them deserve our praise. Also, the people in the community that pulled together and helped the people who needed to be evacuated. The Jacob Center gave some housing to some of those folks, and so we're lucky that it turned out how it did, but I guess we're more than luck. It took some real professional expertise to deal with the situation that they were handed. So thanks again, and I'm sure all my colleagues on council join me in that. Another thing is, since early voting starts tomorrow, just a reminder on Charter Amendment Number One, which this council had passed, and it deals with my district, and I initiated that charter amendment. And it, just a reminder, I think people have heard quite a bit about this. The council's obviously well-versed on it. And this Charter One would simply align the voting cycle for the 5th District candidates in line with all the other districts. And passing this will equalize the status for candidates and voters in the 5th District to participate in the election process in the exact same manner as those in other districts. And it will also relieve confusion across the city that we've undergone over election cycle after election cycle about the oddity of having the 5th District outside of the other voting cycles. So as a representative of the 5th District, I would ask for your support on passing Charter Amendment Number One. If you have any questions at all, please don't hesitate to reach out to me by phone, email. I'm readily available, and you can find all that information on the city council webpage. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, mayor. Council will host a workshop in 10 days on the 24th of October at 5:00 p.m. in this room about Vision Zero and the city's efforts to increase pedestrian safety. And I also wanted to wish a happy early birthday, Councilwoman McKenzie, from all of us here on council. Thank you.
Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, mayor. I'm continuing to hold discussions throughout the community, also about this charter amendment process, primarily focused on Charter Amendment Number Two. And the next opportunity, if folks have more questions, want to talk to someone about the questions on the ballot, we have community volunteers who are going to be at Community Center on MLK. It's 2425 MLK this Saturday and next Saturday from 10 to 2. I'll be there myself. You can stop by and ask me about my opinion. I think I've been quite public about my opinion of a vote no on the second question, but happy to talk to anyone about those reasons, either in person on those Saturdays, or please feel free to find my contact information on the city council's webs, on the city council website of the city of Knoxville, and my phone number or email are there. Thank you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Roberto?
Thank you, mayor. Just wanted to remind everybody, since we've been talking about elections, that early voting does start tomorrow, and it goes through October 31st. You can use any of those convenient locations. We're expecting a lot of turnout this year, so I hope that people will take advantage of those early voting times and locations. Also, Election Day is November 5th, so this is an important election, and I hope everyone will get out and vote. All the way at the very bottom of the ballot, you'll see those charter amendments that folks are talking about, and there's been a lot of discussion about them, and I hope you'll approve both of the charter amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? Seeing none, we'll move right on to Item 8A.
8A is a resolution expressing support for the mayor's reappointments of Thomas Egan and Lily Sevold, and the appointments of William Mendoza, Usada, Amy Kohurst, Michael Moore, and Tiara Lady Wilson to the Neighborhood Advisory Council, and expressing appreciation to Monty Howard, Angel Bowman, Tashawn Ransom, and LaShay Brabson for their years of service.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, before you vote on this, I just want to personally thank all of the appointees, the reappointees, and those rolling off the Neighborhood Advisory Council. They work really hard, and they make our neighborhoods better. Just this last week, Angel Bowman, who has been a longtime member of the Advisory Council, was integral in helping us successfully evacuate the Lonsdale community because she's well-known and trusted and could confirm that these evacuation notices were legitimate. So if all past, current, and incoming Neighborhood Advisory Council members could please raise your hands to be recognized. Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other questions or comments from council? Councilmember McKenzie? No, okay. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
8B is a resolution confirming the reappointment of Casey Cordy to the Better Building Board of the City of Knoxville.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9A is an ordinance to close a portion of Ford Place from the northeast corner of parcel number 095OE032 to its northern terminus adjacent to City Block 260063, and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the adjacent property owner's 1st District.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Turn Up Knox to provide violence interruption, street outreach programs in the city of Knoxville for an amount not to exceed $450,000.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, we have several people signed up to speak in favor of this item. First is Pastor Vincent Jones, Jr. Pastor Jones, you could come to the podium and start by stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Greetings to this prestigious body. My name is Vincent M. Jones, Jr. I serve as the pastor of Tabernacle Missionary Baptist Church that's located at 2137 Martin Luther King, Jr. Avenue. And with that being said, as a preacher and as a pastor, I know that you all won't believe me when I say that I'm not going to utilize the entirety of my time. I don't blame you at all. But in all seriousness, I just want to commend you all for your efforts in regards to this initiative. Certainly, when we lose the life of one within our city, we mourn together. We certainly mourn when there's an act of senseless violence. But I want to celebrate you all because we have an opportunity to celebrate together in regards of the work that is being done across the city of Knoxville. And I just wanted to continue to advocate on behalf of Turn Up Knox for all of their tremendous efforts within the community, and not only within the East Knoxville community, but with all their efforts in regards to being about the business of saving lives. And I just want to commend you all for not giving up on hope. And certainly, we cannot place a monetary value on any life, but we can all roll up our sleeves and we can get into the trenches together to give hope another chance. And I just wanted to commend the efforts of Turn Up Knox as they continue to work and be responsive when there's an issue of violence within our community. And it is my hope and it's my earnest prayer and plea that you will consider the continuation of supporting this organization. I want to commend each and every one of you all for what you do within the community, and I want to, once again, reiterate my support for this program. Thank you. And I didn't utilize my entire time.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak in favor of Item 11A is Kyle Pickle. Pickell? Sorry. You could come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes as well.
Kyle Pickell, 2112 Thalia Street, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37917. Members of city council, thank you for allowing me to speak with you. As I mentioned, my name is Kyle Pickell, and I'm here this evening to proudly stand alongside Turn Up Knox as a representative of the United Way of Greater Knoxville and Vine Middle Magnet School. In my role as the community school's coordinator for Vine, it's my responsibility to advocate on behalf of those I have the honor to work for and with. Our 400 students and families, 90 staff members, and the surrounding community. I'm here to ensure that their concerns, dreams, and aspirations are brought into this room so that their voices are heard. As a community school, we have crafted a shared vision. We're building more than just a school. We are creating a welcoming home for all. Staff, students, families, and neighbors. When you come to our community, every person is valued, heard, and celebrated. To bring this vision to life, we need partners like Turn Up Knox, organizations that act with purpose and urgency. Their mission of creating safer communities through action by interrupting cycles of gun violence in Knoxville is felt deeply within our school. Turn Up Knox not only addresses violence, but also strengthens the fabric of our community by being physically present and emotionally invested. When our students, families, and staff express a need for more mentors and community members within our school, Turn Up Knox answered that call immediately. They don't just show up, they show up when it matters most. Their presence is cherished, their impact is real, and we are proud to call them a partner and a friend. On behalf of Vine Middle, I ask that you honor the hopes of our community by continuing to support Turn Up Knox. Their work directly contributes to the safer, healthier, and more connected future we all strive to build. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak in favor of this item is Sam Brown. Reverend Brown?
If you could start by stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes. Yes, Sam Brown, Norwalk Avenue, 37914. I would ask that you all please, pardon my attire, I wasn't informed that I was in the top three to speak tonight. I thought I would be the wingman. But nonetheless, it gives me great privilege and honor to stand and speak on behalf of the great work that Turn Up Knox has been doing in our community and the effect that we've noticed in real time. Speaking as someone who has officiated and preached eulogies for persons who have fallen victim to gun violence, someone who has counseled families, who is counseling families through that process of grief and loss. And one of the refrains that I have heard continuously in our work is the great impact that Turn Up Knox has had on their experience as they navigate all of the things that they have to go through when experiencing a tragedy. I can speak firsthand to the commitment of Turn Up Knox and how they are always, always present when needed, and how they are indeed committed to this work. And also, with this coming as a recommendation from the Office of Community Safety, I believe that it is absolutely essential for us to follow the direction and leadership of the leader of that office, Ms. Kenia Middlebrook, who I believe brings a very effective and much-needed lens to this work, as she is a product of the community most adversely affected by this. And so we're willing to stand behind her. We know that Turn Up Knox is a very, very important component of our violence reduction strategy, and we will continue with our presence to ensure that their reach goes further and wider and wider. And like my colleague, I also will not use the entirety of my five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Councilmembers, that concludes people who signed up to speak to this agenda item. I did want to bring to your attention that Denzel Grant, the executive director of Turn Up Knox, is here and available. If you have questions, I'm sure, you know, he can give you stats, for example, of about the 300 contacts they've made, the 82 referrals for service, dozens of community events. But I think, I just want to say that they have my confidence. They, we all know that public safety is the most important job that the city does, and we also know from hard experience that the police can't do it alone. And so I think their name that they chose, Turn Up Knox, is indicative of one of their big roles, is they turn up, they show up in some very, very difficult, challenging situations. And whereas they might have done that in the past as community volunteers, now they do it as professionals with the training and de-escalation and violence interruption that helps them be more effective. And I know council is very well aware that last year, we saw a 30% reduction in homicide. 30% reduction, that's lives saved, that's families who, instead of grieving the loss of a loved one or the incarceration of a person who committed the homicide, now have their loved ones with them. That's very, very valuable and important work, and Turn Up Knox is a big part of the reason that we have that reduction. I hope you'll continue to support this partnership. Any questions or comments on this agenda item? Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, just briefly, this is really confirming of our approach on this. I think we do have data now that shows in real terms that this has been effective. And as I've said before, this is consistent. The approach is consistent with what people in my neighborhood said early on before this was started, and apparently, there was some wisdom on the street level because this is being implemented and it's working. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, mayor. I've been, shared communications by email of my concerns with the administration that haven't been fully addressed. The financial reporting is a large piece of that. This is a unique partnership between the city and this organization that received funding. Now, initially, this was a partnership with SEED, and the funding went through SEED as Turn Up Knox was formed as an organization. But there was an expectation that there would be monthly reporting to Director Middlebrook's office. And so with that system in place, I anticipated that if a member of council were to ask about financial reports, those financial reports would be submitted before the day of our meeting. And they would be submitted as a part of the agenda, so they're a part of the public record. And I was also disappointed that the report that we received was incomplete. With the city's support and the collecting of monthly reports, we should be able to produce a more clear picture of what the activities have been over the last year, including expenditures. When we initially funded this program through SEED, a portion of When we initially funded this program through SEED, a portion of that $450,000 was to go towards administrative costs for SEED to help with the development of a new organization. That is no longer a component of their budget, however, their budget hasn't shifted. So I think that there are some really reasonable questions that I've still gone unaddressed. And in addition to that, even in the scope of work, there's a commitment to report to the community. And I don't have a sense of what members of the community are receiving regular updates. It's not just one annual report, but these are regular updates that community members should be receiving. I would love to be one of those community members. I think that we should consider our city council members as a priority for receiving those regular updates so that we can be that point of contact for community members who themselves may have questions. So I feel like I've had some pretty reasonable requests for transparency and accountability that didn't come till today, even though this has been weeks that I've been asking for it. And for that reason and many others, I'm not able to support this contract today.
Councilmember Hesley?
Yes, is Mr. Stare here somewhere?
Yeah.
Could you please come and explain the reporting, the 990, the working with SEED to... Can you just address what she just said? Please?
Yep.
Well, since I talked to you and you were the treasurer, okay, Denzel, do it. It's fine. Yes, that's the reason I was asking you, and you're the one I spoke with, so.
I'm happy to answer.
That's okay. Okay. He can do it.
You can raise the podium if you need to.
Yeah.
Well, it's an electronic switch, but maybe the microphone will do it.
Good evening, city council members, mayor, community members. My name is Denzel Grant. In terms of our finances, as Mrs. Hesley mentioned, our 990 hasn't been completed for the year. With Turn Up Knox shifting to a fiscal year of January to January, and our funding coming from the city being September to September, a full year hasn't been able to be completed. We have sent over a statement of activity in regards to our finances, and I'm more than welcome to answer any questions in terms of where the finances are going.
Ms. Hesley, did you have any more particular questions for Mr. Grant or other board members?
Just that he could address, because I think in a conversation I had with the treasurer, all that was discussed. There was question about their 501(c)(3) status, which I understand they have a letter that they did receive that status on June 24th of this year. As far as, like, there was a good sum of money paid to SEED to, I guess, be a pass-through for you all, basically, as a fiscal sponsor?
Correct.
I don't know what she's talking about, I mean, but that was a substantial amount of money. And now that you're 501(c)(3), I guess you don't have to do that anymore, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, if you, the, when will the 990 be up? Does anybody know?
Well, with the deadline is November 15th. So, I mean, we're looking at, within the next 30 days, we should have our 990 completed.
Right. And then the other thing I did ask Mr. Stare to do was if he could put your board members on your website, which is always helpful and looks, it wasn't on there when I looked, and so, that's easy enough to do since I now know who they are.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So, thank you for everything you do. We're grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Middlebrook, did you have some information?
Well, I was just going to add, you know, separate and apart from the 990s, I believe the monthly reporting to the city was referenced. And so, the Office of Community Safety does receive monthly reports. It is generally, has not been our practice to, for any of the programming or anything that we do, whether it's grants or service contracts, to release the reports regularly. But where those reports are requested, they are typically shared, whether those are programming reports or financial reports. And so, I did receive, I think, some requests yesterday with regards to reports. And so, we are typically, we are able to access those reports digitally, and so, we can more than willingly, more than willing to compile both programmatic and financial reports and share them. But we do receive reports from Turn Up Knox, both programmatic and financial reports that are separate and apart from, you know, their annual filings and anything that would be audited. They share that information with us on a monthly basis.
Councilmember Mackenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm not certain, this may be Ms. Middlebrook's question. I'm a little confused, and I may be looking at two different years. On page 46, we see the proposed budget, and then we also see the...
Could you use your microphone a little bit? Yeah. There you go.
I'm sorry. On page 46, we see the proposed budget, and we see a breakdown on staffing. But we also have that on page 53. Am I looking at two different years, potentially?
Yeah.
Maybe 23 versus 22?
Director Middlebrook or Mr. Grant, either of you can...
So I believe what you're looking at on page 46, beginning on page 46, is a more broad programming budget for the organization as a whole. And what you see on page 53 is specific to our funding piece. So I think in past year, in the previous year, you all only saw the overall project, program budget. But what we did ask for was a more specific detailing of how city funds would be allocated within the program budget. So you can see there that the overall program budget is larger than the city share. On page 46, it's a larger program budget than the city share.
Okay, correct. But when I'm looking at the two different, even on a salary perspective, I'm seeing some gaps there. So there's like, from 53, page 53 to 46, there's some that have increases of $35,000 to $25,000. So am I seeing that the city is providing, our funding provides for this, that total amount of staffing or a portion of that?
Only a portion of the staffing.
Only a portion of the staffing. And do we, we don't have that probably percentage level?
I don't have it broken down as a percentage, I'm sorry.
Okay. And so, and so I think, you know, one of my concerns and what's, that I will share that's been brought to my attention is that the city does, we do provide over 90% of the budget, of the, you know, budget funding for this organization. And the question was, that I just recently got in, was what percent of funding does the city provide to an organization before we view it as an entity or falling under the city's umbrella? And is there any examples that we have where we have funded an organization?
I'll give an example. The Family Justice Center, we provide the lion's share of their funding. I don't know the exact percentage, but it's just the city and then federal grant. And again, similar to Turn Up Knox, they're relatively new, 501(c)(3), and they're trying to bolster their fundraising. And I believe, Mr. Grant, they just had their first fundraiser, the Sneaker Ball, which I was fortunate enough to attend. It was a lot of fun, and I think you raised some money. And I think Turn Up Knox is also, you know, it used to be just city funds, and since, and last year, you've received a few grants from outside other entities. And I think Councilmember Mackenzie wants to know if you're going to keep growing that and so that you can not be as dependent on the city.
Absolutely. And, you know, that's, that's, that's really been our goal since day one, is exploring other options in terms of finances. With us receiving our 501(c)(3) status here recently, even before then, we've been able to bring in private donations. We received a grant from the University of Tennessee. We received multiple grants from NICJR. The Appalachian Fund has also committed a certain amount of funding to us. So, we are exploring other funding options. We've able, actually been able to bring in an additional $115,000 on our own, which actually, I mean, that's, that's 20% of our budget, right? So we actually would only be relying on our budget. That's about 80% of what our budget would be, would be coming from the city. So, we definitely look forward to, you know, exploring other funding options as well.
Okay. And so, and so I think the, the example of the city funding to a nonprofit, the Family Justice Center, would be that example, that we would, that we are providing 80% to 90% it sounds like of their?
I think that's the closest comparison I can think of off the top of my head. And again, it, it used to be, you know, just a 100%, you know, city-funded, and it, so it's, it's hard. It's hard to be a new 501(c)(3). But I think Turn Up Knox has grown a lot in the last couple of years, from not existing to starting up, getting a board, you know, so I think there's more improvements and maturing yet to come. But I'm, I personally am very impressed with their progress, which is why, you know, I'm proposing that their contract be renewed. But I, I don't expect it to stop now. It's going to continue to progress and evolve and have a more varied sources of revenue than just the city.
Right. And I understand just getting your 501(c)(3) just this year, what were some of the barriers that you all, oh, is my time up? I guess I need to...
Well, you can, why don't you finish that sentence, and then we'll move on to the answer and other council members.
What were the barriers that, that you're, if you can speak to it, it may be a board question, that was encountered in your 501(c)(3) process?
To start off, the IRS was backed up. IRS was backed up. Eric, I can't, I can't get his last name.
Eric Armento.
Yeah, he, the professor at the College of Law, he helped us during that process. It took him a while, and we had to fill out a long form, being that we were receiving more than $50,000. So we, we had to do a long form application, which took a while. And just, just being honest, we didn't have the support that we expected the first year. Our fiscal sponsor, they didn't support us the way they needed to. So we were learning on the fly, and so here we are.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fugit?
Thank you, Mayor. No real questions, just an observation of someone who also tries to raise money to support a worthy cause. There are lots of fabulous worthy causes in our city, and it takes a while to have people get used to something new, especially a project that is unknown, untested, and people are unfamiliar with in this community. So it is going to be, have to be heavily funded by government and/or grants, and it will probably always have to be mostly funded that way. The private philanthropic community will come along, but it will come along more slowly. So I just think the reality is, is everyone thinks it's really easy to try to raise money until you try to do it. And it is, I, I, you, yes, you need to do more. I need to do more for mine. It is, it is forever a challenge, but it is hard to stand up something, especially a new concept, to try to build the story to get people to invest in you. So, thank you and continue to do the hard work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. A few points. So to respond to the 990, we received a finance report last year. It also arrived late, so it wasn't a part of the agenda or the public record. But if they can send us a full finance report last year, it doesn't make sense to me that they can't send it this year. On the issue of the $450,000, what they are asking for is a contract from the city that's at $450,000. They haven't given us a $550,000 budget. What they've given us are how they expect to spend the city's $450,000, which includes doubling staff pay from last year for two staff. The additional $100,000 is funding that they hope to raise, is what they said. Or perhaps, Mr. Grant, has said they've already raised that $100,000. But their budget is fully covered by city funds. If they have raised 10% of their budget, then we should cut at least 10% from the $450,000. Or not even, you know, perhaps even more if we don't agree with doubling the wages of the current staff. The other issue I wanted to bring up was the reporting. The reporting that I'm talking about, well, some, some accountability from the Office on Community Safety would be welcome, as I've been asking for these reports from Denzel directly, Mr. Grant. And then when I did not get them, I did follow up with Ms. Middlebrook, who was also a part of those conversations. The reports I'm talking about are on page 41. Collect, evaluate, report, de-identify data regarding program participants, program activities, and outcomes back to the communities and members affected by violence, to the Office of Community Safety, relevant stakeholders. What I'm asking is if this is information that is supposed to be regularly shared back to the community, impacted community, so we have an understanding of what our violence reduction program is like, please include city council members in that list of stakeholders if the intention is for you to come back before us for a $450,000 grant that fully funds the organization. Now, I understand the politics involved here, and now I'm wasting my breath, but I got to get that on the record because this is not acceptable and better can be done. And some folks have questioned, well, we, the numbers are going down. Just be happy that the numbers are going down. The reason why I supported a violence interruption program rather than increasing the law enforcement budget is because I believe that how you go about reducing that violence is extremely important. And I want my city committed to addressing those root causes, helping build a community of violence interrupters, a community of strong, community-based organizations that will not only be here once the city's not handing out $450,000 gifts, but have a foundation that they'll be able to serve the, our community long after this current interest in, in funding these programs. And so that's why I want the details of what's happening, because I do see Knoxville engaging in too many pretextual stops. I know Memphis tried to pass an ordinance to, to adopt some police reform, and the state government said, no, Memphis, y'all can't do that. Memphis tried to limit pretextual stops. State government said, y'all can't do that. So city council can't adopt an ordinance, but we can promote a culture that upholds the constitutional rights of our residents, even if the state isn't going to allow us to put laws in place to ensure that happens. And so I don't want any kind of community-based groups to be used as a front or a cover. I want to be able to know what y'all are doing and celebrate it. And so I'm just asking for that transparency and that accountability.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the questions around financial accountability, and I think there's been a lot of good questions raised tonight, but I don't want to miss the forest for the trees. You all have evidence and plenty of data for all that have ears that are willing to hear that you have curbed retaliatory violence among youth in our community. So, it may be a bit hyperbolic, but I'd pay one person $450,000 to do that. So the fact that you all have created an organization that is young and that is figuring its way and have a measurable change in our community in saving young deaths is commendable. I think it's not lost on me that we had a week last week of dealing with volatile situation, and I think you all deal with those every day, and the, the two are very similar. So you all have done great work, and I think we, as a city, fund more than 100 nonprofits in some way, shape, or form, and I don't hear us requiring monthly reporting and to-the-level detail that's been requested tonight. So, and I would suggest that you all are doing... So, and I would suggest that you all are doing as important, if not more important, work than, than many. I do want to ask either Mr. Grant, you know, I got to, again, for those that are willing to hear, I sat with you and listened to a lot of the changes that you all have undergone. And Director Middlebrook, maybe, maybe you could weigh in here, too. What has changed from where you started and where you are now? I'm specifically interested in tactics. So maybe you were all over town, and now you're in two parts of town now, or now you're only involved in certain types of violence. Where have you found your sweet spot in terms of making a measurable impact that you've learned over the past year?
I can, I can speak from my perspective. First year, learning the work, right? Understanding what it is, focusing on educating ourselves. I think we've stepped into a place where we've been, you know, we're more community-informed on, on what goes on in our community. And so while myself, myself and our staff had those connections, you know, we, we build trust and partnerships with not only community members, but organizations who are also out there engaging every day with individuals. And I think, you know, Councilwoman Parker mentioned having community members, having organizations that support the work that we do. I mean, we, we get tremendous amount of support. I mean, the, the support is overwhelming, and like I said, it doesn't just come from community members, but it comes from organizations, clergy, and just different many people in, in our community. So I, I think that's, that truly was the difference. We did center on youth early on, which, that, that's, that's part of the proactiveness of the work. And so now that we're dialed in, we're actually engaging with more high-risk individuals. We're able to build the capacity of introducing intensive life coaching into our program. I think that's what you're seeing in terms of the difference that's being made. And when you talk about thirty percent, thirty-three percent reduction the first year, we're looking to finish the year off with a forty-six, right now, we're at forty percent, forty-six percent reduction in non-fatal shootings. And based on data that I could find, this will be the first year in six years that black men and women will die at a lesser rate than our counterparts. And so, I mean, there's, there's no question that what we're doing i- is working, so.
Thank you for that. Director Middlebrook?
Yes, I, just to reiterate, especially on the kind of last piece of what Mr. Grant shared with regard to the intentionality and the focus of the work, I think, initially being, the space being new, I think, to a lot of us, and especially as a city, and the organization developing and forming, a lot of time was spent in the initial year, year and a half or so, really building a structure for the organization, building, for lack of a better term, kind of building the brand, helping to make sure that folks in the community knew that the organization existed and what it was kind of intended to do, and finding those points of engagement to really begin to develop and nurture some of those existing relationships that folks within the organization maybe had as individuals, but thinking about how those relationships could grow and evolve to, to impact the organization and, and getting folks familiar with the work, and then also making sure that the staff and volunteers, because they do also engage volunteers in this work, and some of those volunteers eventually become staff, which is fantastic, but making sure that they were really growing professionally in the space, because this is professional work, right? This is, this is a profession. And so, you know, thinking about what training looked like and engaging in, in various trainings to understand the techniques, the tactics, and how these roles fit into the larger community-based violence reduction ecosystem, I think was really critical. And I, I have to shout out, while I have the mic, where's Emmanuel? Emmanuel Hernandez, who is here with us today, is Program Manager with the National Institute for Criminal Justice Reform, who was here today for the purposes of doing some of these trainings that we're talking about. And so really thinking about how the work becomes more focused and more intentional on those at very high risk for engaging in violence, because these strategies are not intended to be broad-sweeping. It's not intended to be, have a super far reach. It's intended to really engage those individuals who are at highest risk. And so thinking about how we can not only see the benefits of the, the broader community impact and the engagement that's happening with community building and the great work that's happening. Thank you to the staff from Community Schools from Vine for coming and talking about the impact that this organization is able to have on their school community, which is super important, but digging into really thinking about how we are engaging those at highest risk for participating in violence. And so when you see the life coaching pilot come into place, that's what that's really designed for, to connect those folks to the resources and the services and supports that they need to hopefully make a different choice. So it's become a lot more focused.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Singh?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to point out, Ms. Middlebrook, do you remember, was it, it was during the COVID years, which is all a blur, but if it was February twenty twenty-one, where there were twenty-five homicides by February or March, and a lot of those were African-American, a lot of those were kids, and that's when we started some of these really serious conversations. We're forgetting what we came from to where we are right now. At the time, I was requesting four million dollars to fund community, people who were already working in the community, to continue doing this work. I'd still love to see that, but on a tenth of that, yeah, money, we've done pretty good. This is not the end-all, be-all or the solution. We still need to work on the poverty issues that are the root causes of it. But I think this is a good place that the phrase "stop the bleeding," I think that's been pretty effective. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I agree with your, with your comments, Councilwoman Singh. And also, I don't want to, I don't want anyone sitting around this table or in this room to think that I do not appreciate or value the work that Turnup Knox is doing. That is not my, my point at all. I also just want us to make sure that we recognize, as Councilwoman just Singh mentioned, that we have other partners that are also in this lane, that have been in this lane. And I think you guys have collaborated, and some of those folks have worked with you all. And it is, this is a joint effort. What I think differentiates Turnup Knox is that there is the opportunity that you have to resources as far as collaboration with the Police Department and other entities, with the Violence Reduction Leadership Team, which to me is invaluable. And so I want you guys to know that I do very much appreciate the work that you do. I'm in the community as well, and so I know what you do, I hear what you do, I see what you do. And so pray for you all, as well as the other people who are out on the front line that are doing the work as well. And so I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, I just wanted to mention also the cost of gun violence. And, you know, we're having to pay substantial money. I think it's well justified. The cost of gun violence without doing anything, according to some figures, is one point five million per homicide, seven hundred thousand per non-fatal shootings. Just the amount of money in instances of violence that we have to pay to the court system, incarcerating people, the Police Department, et cetera, that's just kind of a fraction. I don't know, can't nail down exactly one point five million per homicide, but what we can say with confidence is gun violence is really expensive. So if we want to get down just to, to dollars and cents, you know, we have to invest in preventing it in order to prevent more expenditures in other ways.
Councilmember Thomas, I'm, I'm not sure where you got those figures, but we actually, in partnership with NICJR, have a report on the specific to Knoxville cost of gun violence, which is up on the website. We can send you a link if you, if we haven't already, but yeah, that's absolutely true.
Yeah, that's what I was quoting from.
Okay, you're quoting from that, yeah.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, well, that, I just want to just reiterate, that's specific to Knoxville, not just some national figure. And that, of course, that doesn't measure the, the human cost, per se, it's just the numbers, but they're both obviously quite substantial. So thank you for bringing that up. Councilmember McKenzie?
In my last comment, I also want to be clear, as Turnup Knox knows and others who are working out in the field, that the violence that we experience in our community is not just around gun violence, that there is significant acts of violence that happen as well. So I know that we, you know, we look at those statistics, but you all also know, and I'm sure you go on calls, that you get maybe outside of the police that are not gun-related but are very dangerous and sometimes life-threatening, and there are fatalities as well. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Councilmember Singh?
Just one last comment. One, my math was wrong, sorry about that. But also, I've seen the monthly violence leadership meetings. I'm not calling it the right thing, but you guys are always present there, and you always do a report on your programming. It would be helpful if all the other council members that don't make it to that meeting could get that information.
Absolutely.
Are we invited? It's open to the public.
It's open to the public, yeah. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven, one.
Eleven B is a resolution authorizing the Industrial Development Board of the City of Knoxville to negotiate and accept from City Summit LLC or an affiliate thereof payments in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to certain property located at five one six and zero West Vine Avenue, Knoxville, Tennessee. And finding that such permit payments are deemed to be in the furtherance, or to be in the furtherance of the public purposes of the board is defined in Tennessee Code Annotated Section seven dash fifty-three dash three zero five.
Now I'll move to approve.
Motion made and seconded. Councilmembers, I'm sure you read the email about this. This, this project offers multiple benefits consistent with our development priorities, including expansion of the permit housing supply, expansion of workforce housing, redevelopment of a vacant parcel within the Summit Hill redevelopment area, and it's located in our downtown core within close proximity to existing CAT bus lines. And this is a nine-year pilot. Ms. Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I had questions about the terms of the pilot, and I don't think I've gotten an email response, but perhaps, did you get my email? Did you get my email, Bentley?
Ms. Justice and, and Mr. Bentley are both here.
I did not, but happy to answer any questions.
So my email was about the eighty percent AMI, and that continues to be the target for affordable housing projects, especially with pilots. And my question was why? Because it doesn't align with the reports we've been shared by the city. If we look at that income bracket, that's an income bracket where there isn't a negative supply of, of, of housing. There's still a lot of pressure at that price point. But my argument is, the folks, you know, working in restaurants downtown, making twenty thousand a year, what about these folks? You know, when I reach out to the developer, they say, "We do everything that we can to meet the terms presented to us by the city." They don't say, "We can't do a, a, a project at that rate. We can't do a project that incorporates, you know, sixty percent, fifty percent AMI." They say, "We work to meet the terms presented to us by the city." So my question is, why do we keep focusing on eighty percent AMI?
So, yeah, Ben Bentley, nine oh one North Broadway, you should get that on a recording next time. I would love, we, we, I'm joking, but we, we, we welcome those conversations. Obviously, the City of Knoxville, over the last two years, has prioritized for the first time affordable workforce housing within these developments. We're not, I don't want to speak for American Cannon, but I think this is accurate. We're not where we want to be. We would love to have longer terms, more deeply affordable at AMI levels, and all of those things present financial trade-offs. So we're working very hard to get more housing supply, but also incorporate affordability into those. I think the best way to do that, and we're trying to work with HUD on this, it's a whole side project, but to be able to include subsidized units within market-rate stuff in a way that does not impact rent to the owner is the most effective way to do that. And there's some nuance to that. It's not as easy as the ten-second version I just said, but that's where we're trying to get.
Well, and I would just remind Councilmember Parker that, as you know, that council has supported a huge comprehensive plan, Attainable Resilient Knoxville, and our pilot programs for developments like this one on your agenda tonight is just a tiny, tiny fraction of the affordable housing plan, and we have contributed to the development of thousands of affordable housing at, at the lowest income levels, you know, at Western, Transforming Western and First Creek at Austin, at various other low-income housing subsidized gap financing projects throughout the city. And these pilots, if you recall, the way we did pilots in the past, there was no component of affordability at all. So we've gone from zero to often containing ten percent or more workforce housing in these downtown developments. But that, again, is just a tiny fraction of the affordable housing plans that this council has supported, not just in word, but in budget. And, you know, Mr. DeBose is happy to meet with you and review our plan and share with you what, what we've already done and what we will propose to be doing moving forward.
Well, let me finish with my time. So I, my preference would be, at this point, where we see the numbers. Because if you look at this income bracket, it's like, there's a surplus of seven thousand units. And if you look at, you know, twenty thousand and below, there's a shortage of five thousand To me, there has to be a focus where there is the greatest need. To, I, I understand that the city has this plan of, like, releasing the pressure on that, on cer- certain income brackets, but that doesn't create housing for those at the lowest end. Freeing up housing-
Thank you. That's five minutes.
-at that level doesn't free up housing.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. There seem, Deputy Justice and Mr. Bentley, there seems to be a focus on the ten percent mark of affordable units as part of the overall unit mix. Is that just the sweet spot of affordability, trade-off? Talk about why it's not five percent more often or twenty percent more often.
So once, once again, economically, and I mentioned AMI and the duration of the affordability period, but you raise a great point there. There's a third ingredient to that. So all of these things that you do ultimately affect the pro forma and the likelihood of the, the project happening. So there's no secret recipe, but we want to expand all of those ingredients to the extent possible. Ten percent is kind of a starting point, but I think we would love to be at twenty percent in a couple of years. Joe Petrie, you need to, you know, cover your ears back there, but that's just something we would like to see. The other thing, I just want to build on the mayor's point, if I can. I, I think if we think about, we pan back, there's actually more Lytech pilot units than any, it doesn't even approach the market-rate stuff we're doing in terms of volume. There's a lot more. So four thousand eighty-one, the data man right there. So we have, I mean, you can go up and down, we talked about Magnolia the other night, you can go to, you know, Burlington Commons, you can go to the Ammons, you can go to First Creek at Austin, the Vista.
Mr. Bentley, could you just refresh our memories on what Lytech stands for and how that automatically gets, you know, who it's for?
Yeah.
And how we help with it.
Yeah, so, so Low Income Housing Tracks Credit Program is the main way that we develop affordable housing, really, in our country, new affordable housing. It typically serves sixty percent of area median income and below, but we really prioritize project-based vouchers within those, which can serve anyone. It's a, it's a subsidized housing unit within the affordable housing. So we really are looking at being able to serve extremely low income through most of those Lytech pilot deals, all the way up to eighty percent of area median income, which would be about seventy thousand for a family of four.
I appreciate that. I have one more question. It seems to me that, you know, commend the team here of refining the pilots and, and just balancing changes and whatnot. For instance, I'm glad to see there's a two-year construction period required. I think that's helpful, and, you know, when rezonings happen, I get asked a lot, you know, two years later, what happened to that? And what's the deal with that? Well, when there's an incentive involved, we get to put a timer on it, and I think that's a healthy balance or trade-off. When does the clock start for that construction period? When dirt starts moving, when the permit is approved by Director Aaron?
Typically, the pilot will close at the same time that the construction contract closes, so it's all one financial closing, and the clock would start with that construction period. So up until that point, the owner- So up until that point, the owner is just paying as if it's, you know, if it's raw land, whatever the property taxes are for that.
Okay, so the closure of the pilot triggers the two-year construction period. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Parker, you're next, but I failed to see that someone had spoken, signed up to speak in favor of this. My apologies. Mr. Bartholomew, are you present? I'm sorry that I didn't call on you before the discussion began. Council members, I'll ask Mr. Bartholomew to share his comments with you, and then we'll go back to your discussion.
Thank you. Parker Bartholomew, 5406 Summit Ridge Lane, three seven nine two one. I'm in favor of this project. This is a great infill project to continue providing housing downtown. This project's coming in, as you all know, I'm a numbers guy, so bear with me a little bit, coming in at twenty-five million or two-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars per unit. This is much lower than the projects that we've approved previously in the previous years, and I want to commend the development team on getting their build costs under control. And the pilot is the only public incentive on this project, which, again, is... It's commendable that what they're doing. The average monthly rent here is going to be twenty-two sixty-three per month, which is equivalent to a three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar mortgage. We currently do not have the housing supply to provide housing in the city for homeowners, and the zoning code is the reason for this scarcity. With missing middle, hopefully, we can create more homes for homeowners. The twelve-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars per month that somebody's making for the affordable portion of this now means that someone making forty-five thousand dollars qualifies and not be cost burden. This means that half of city employees need subsidized housing to live in the city. We need to continue to promote housing units, and hopefully, we can find a solution to homeownership to answer some of the questions that you all said about why we cannot provide housing to people lower than eighty percent AMI. And mainly, that's because you cannot do that building multifamily residential. The building code will not allow you to build affordably. You have to think of another solution. That's why, when we talk about missing middle, we talk about ADUs, we talk about tiny homes, and we talk about townhouses, that's the only way, because it's a math problem. It's a math problem. So just want to say thank you again to the development team, and I wish them well on this project. Thank you.
Counsel, that concludes people signed up to speak on this item. Ms. Parker?
Thank you. And I appreciate Mr. Bartholomew's comments, because it helped with my comments. I don't necessarily agree, I apologize, but some good points were raised that speak to what I'm talking about. Like, we are relying on the city to, and KCDC, to package these deals. And I believe more is possible. I believe we can get some downtown workers who are making twenty thousand a year. We can get some of those city workers making forty thousand a year also in this building, because, as we just heard, or were reminded of, this is the pilot is the only public incentive. Right? So when we pool our incentives together, look at longer pilots, you know, certain grants that can help subsidize some of the costs of that, then we can provide more spaces for those under that eighty percent threshold. I appreciate the reminder that there's other building happening. I'm talking about downtown living. I'm talking about how do we, you know, I'm seeing posts made by, you know, affordable housing supporters in regards to this project and saying, you know, "Our restaurant workers deserve a place to live downtown." Yeah, they do. This ain't it, right? When people hear affordable housing, when they hear workforce housing downtown, they think that the actual workforce that they recognize as labor will be able to live there, but we're not including them in the equation. The lowest we'll go for these deals, it seems, is eighty percent. And then, you know, the lower, very low income, they're a part of other projects, but I would like to see these pilot deals include a mix of incomes, include diverse public funding sources, so that helps guarantee that affordable housing might last beyond the pilot, right? Because if we have no other public incentives attached to this, once the pilot, you know, once they could sell the property and pay off and not have a pilot, and then we have no public... We have no way of holding them to those affordable housing commitments. So I like the mix. I like the packages with the mix, because that guarantees us longer affordable housing. We can do multiple kinds of affordable housing, and it goes beyond just getting another piece of property on the tax rolls. And we will benefit from that down the road, but right now, we can use this tool to really address some city needs. So that's what I'm going to keep pushing for, I'm going to keep pushing for us to... You know, I supported the ten percent affordable housing as a part of a pilot when we began this, because we were in the midst of a crisis, growing inflation, loan rates were out the wall, instruction... Construction costs were out the wazoo. Things shift and change, right? Loan rates have come down. We're not in the place we were two years ago. We should also shift our requirements for what it takes to get this incentive.
Any further questions or comments? Councilmember Fugit?
Thank you. Mr. Bentley, if you can come back, just, I think it bears saying, which we all know, but in this financing discussion, I think it bears repeating that the developer, regardless of our incentives or whatever we do, the project has to work financially in order for a financial institution to finance it.
Yes.
And so that is the biggest hurdle, the math part of it, because it has to go to the private sector to receive financing. And so the pilot is just kind of the last piece that puts that together so that something can be built. And I agree with Ms. Parker that it'd be nice to have more, but that would probably also reduce overtime, the scope of how many we can do, because the more, the more different grants and incentives you put together in a project, the shorter the reach of all of the number of things you can do. And so I do think, you know, you can discuss that, but that is, there's also the side of that. But in the end, nothing works if a bank won't finance it.
That's right, and I think debt is maybe still the most difficult... There's a lot of difficulties related to development, but debt is hard right now. And most of the deals that we bring, the debt service coverage ratios are as tight as a bank would possibly finance. I know, Councilwoman Fugit, you've worked in that space before, so you're familiar, but that is the point of the pilot, is to make it underwriteable from a lending institution perspective. And then, I think we've, on top of that, tried to add the affordability where we can and make both work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven one. Next item, please.
Eleven C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Design Innovation Architects Incorporated in an amount not to exceed one million seventy-five thousand dollars to provide administrative and technical services for engineering projects funded by the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, non-competitive American Rescue Plan Act grant.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Parker, did you want to speak to this item?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a webpage with some federal funding on it, but this TDEC ARPA funding, is that separate from what we've reported on the website?
Yeah, there's several different tranches of federal funding through ARPA. Two tranches that came in consecutive years directly to the city. Others came to the state that we got through TDEC. That's ARPA dollars. I think it's noted on our page, but I'm not sure off the top of my head. Mr. Evans?
The truth is, I hadn't looked at that page in quite a while, and... But we got, we got two tranches of twenty million each roughly in ARPA proper, and then, as you just said, we got another twenty million from the state in terms of what we call TDEC ARPA.
And of course, the TDEC was specifically for stormwater. It couldn't be used for other things.
So I did look on that website today, and I couldn't find it, and thought it would be good if we could add these projects to that page.
Okay, we'll either find it or add it.
Awesome.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with National Data and Surveying Services Incorporated to conduct a traffic sign inventory and assessment in an amount not to exceed eight-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars.
Motion made to approve. Is there a second? It has been seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Singh?
Thank you, Mayor. Is this something, is this something we periodically do, or when is, when is the last time we did a study like this, a survey?
Mr. Claybo?
That's Tom Claybo, engineering director. Twenty fifteen was the last assessment we did. This assessment will... It also includes kind of geolocating all the signs and then testing them as far as how they reflect at night. So it'll get us in compliance with the MUTC, the manual that controls what we do with
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation for the Fort Sanders Neighborhood and Tyson Park Connection Project for an estimated project cost of six million six-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand, with TDOT funding five million three-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars, and the city funding one million three-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? We have one person signed up to speak in favor of this. Mike Bensy. Mr. Bensy, are you present?
Yes.
All right. Please come on up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mike Bensy. I live at one thousand and one Ledgerwood Avenue, Knoxville, three seven nine one seven. Hi, Charlie. Thank you for appointing me to the Greenways Commission. I am currently chairman of the Greenways Commission, and I highly recommend this project because it will accommodate bicycle and pedestrian transportation in that area. So I'm a bike rider, been riding bikes for decades in Knoxville. Anything that can help make Knoxville a safer place for pedestrians and bicycles is definitely worth it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bensy. Counsel, I just also wanted to let you know, Carolyn Cooley, who's a longtime former president of Bike Walk Knox, longtime advocate for our greenways and pedestrian and bike connections, she couldn't be here tonight, but she's been advocating for this particular connection for probably ten or more years, and wanted me to pass on that she's, hopes you will approve it. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Eleven F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Chris Higard Plumbing LLC in an amount not to exceed five-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand, four-hundred-and-ten dollars, seventy-five cents for the Washington Pike Drainage Improvements Project.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Gresham Smith in an amount not to exceed eighty-nine thousand seven-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars to provide construction, engineering, and inspection services for the Washington Pike Drainage Improvements Project.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and accept a grant award in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-four dollars from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for a continuum of care planning grant to support COC planning activities with a required local match of twenty-five percent.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Ms. Reed, Erin Reed, and Kevin DeBoz are here, if you have any questions, any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and accept a grant award of five-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand, seventy-one dollars with no local match from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Juvenile Justice, and Delinquency Prevention for continued funding for the, of the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and accept a grant from the State of Tennessee Highway Safety Office in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars with no required local match to provide overtime funding for pedestrian safety campaigns.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Singh?
Thank you. I know this is just a grant we're applying to, but it seems like the money going to the Zero Vision folks at the city might be the place for us to be doing pedestrian safety
Chief Noel? I think we've, this is a grant we've applied for and received in the past, but I'm sure we're coordinating with Vision Zero. Can you answer the question, please?
Sure. This is the third year we received this grant. This is a grant from the Highway Safety Commission, specifically involving law enforcement. So this is for education and pedestrian safety. So we use our police officers and our cadets to try to educate members of the public on how to be safe. We have yard signs, we have flyers, we pass out. It's an education grant, it's not eligible for outside of law enforcement.
It sounds like it's a grant that is only eligible for law enforcement. It'd be nice if it went to Vision Zero in the city department, just to loosen up all of the work you guys have to do, alleviate some of it, but it is...
Sure, but it's, you know, a law enforcement officer has to be the one actually doing the work the way the program is written.
Councilmember Parker?
Thank you. I saw KPD was recruiting crossing guards for school crossing zones. And I didn't realize that KPD employed those individuals. I'm assuming this grant has nothing to do with that?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay, so how is, is that funded? Just through KPD's general budget?
It is. That's the school crossing guards. They make a small stipend to work at public schools in the city to help kids get across the street before school and after school.
Are those full-time positions?
No, they're not.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Jowers Cleaning Service for janitorial services for various city community centers for an annual cost not to exceed one-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand dollars.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Twelve A is an ordinance to adopt the latest versions of the International Building Codes with amendments and deleting the existing related sections for buildings and building regulations codified at Chapter Six, Articles Six, six dash one through six dash one zero
Motion made to approve, seconded. Any questions or discussion? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's on the next page.
On the next page. Okay. Mr. Bartholomew signed up to speak in opposition to this item, and Mr. Mullins is here to answer any questions council may have. Mr. Bartholomew, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address counsel.
Thank you. Parker Bartholomew, 5406 Summit Ridge Lane, three seven nine two one. New state laws are included in this, so I'm for some of this and against some of this. New state laws are set... New state laws are Section 6.6. These will help us to build affordable housing on single stair. We're one of the first in the nation to adopt it. Allowing triplexes and quadplexes will help us on missing middle. As I illustrated, our build costs are out of control. The number one reason for this is our building and zoning codes. To say that we need to pass the 2024 codes to stay in compliance with the state law is just not accurate. I have an email from the Tennessee Department of Commerce and Insurance saying that the city will be in compliance with its current code until 2027. On page 515 of your packet, you can see where city council has already lowered the seismic category, which has been the source of many code modification requests. Now we have a different seismic, or how we have a different seismic classification for residential than commercial, and why plans reviewed and not apply the seismic category to commercial property, I'll never know. But to imply adopting the 2024 codes is how you fix this problem is disingenuous. How you fix this is to apply the exemption to commercial or come back to you all and ask for a modification of the ordinance. This exemption and code modification requests were reviewed by the state as part of our audit, and we were found to be in compliance. Before you, right here, these are the code modification requests that we filed just on seismic classifications. These represent millions of dollars of wasted fees from engineers, wasted times from our building department to review them, and delays to projects. What you do not see are the projects that decided to go ahead and build to the higher seismic classification. The impact increases the size of the footers, results in more concrete and rebar, larger beams and more structural components, and overall increased costs. I had a unique situation designing one of these projects to both seismic classifications. It resulted in a cost increase of over $75,000 on a million-dollar project. This is one mistake that the code added almost 10% to the project. We adopted the 2018 code very soon after its adoption. In a very similar fashion, we're trying now to adopt the 2024 code. It's important to note that the state is on the 2015 codes, and each legislative cycle we're given exemptions to the code. So even the older codes, we continue to find things that should not apply. Up until a few weeks ago, in the 2024 code, we did not allow gas water heaters, gas HVAC units, gas dryers, or gas stoves. Luckily, this has been moved to an appendix in the 24 code, which I'm now being told that we're not adopting, thank goodness. Perhaps the most well-known modification is since 2009, we're required to have sprinkler systems in our single-family houses. The state has provided us an exemption to that requirement. I would prefer that you not pass the 2024 codes, but if you must, I ask that you give us the option to use the 2018 code for the next year. At the stakeholder meetings that were held, they were held before we had a complete 2024 code. We were not able to discuss the changes mainly with the energy code because at the time they were being litigated. Projects that are taking longer to plan and that may not have submitted for permit yet are designed based off the 2018 codes. I believe there's some beneficial things in the 2024 codes, and I also believe that there are some horrible changes. My request is that we slow down because we don't know what we don't know. By giving us a year to choose, it will give us an opportunity to apply both and see where the pitfalls are. We'll be able to learn from the mistakes of the past, and hopefully we won't do them again. Thank you.
Thank you, council. That concludes the people who signed up to speak to this. Peter Aronson is available, and obviously, if you have any questions for him and Grant Rosenberg, our COO is also available if you have any questions. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you. I'd have questions for Mr. Aronson. Hello.
Hi there.
So much has been happening with your department lately, and that does, you know, that does have an impact on the development community. Can you help us understand the timing of adopting these new regulations?
Sure. So these regulations came out in the beginning of '24. I've been in the building code industry since '98. My personal opinion is a six-year cycle is good. The codes come out every three years, but if we adopt the current codes every, it's tough to keep track of projects. Contractors, developers are struggling to keep up. Waiting for a nine-year cycle, you've got products that are outdated. We're already dealing with, in the HVAC industry, where products are no longer available. And so people are asking, hey, can we use the new stuff that's not even in the 2018 code? And so we address those as needed. We were talking about a sweet spot earlier with Mr. Bentley. Six years is, from my experience, a pretty good sweet spot. I agree, I don't like to rush things. I don't want to adopt them as soon as they're out. That's why we bought the codebooks right as soon as they were available, and we've spent this year working through them. We put on, we put on two public meetings. We've gone out to, I think, four or five other interest groups, whether it's, I don't know what CSI stands for, Construction Specifications Institute. There was 60 or 70 architects, builders, contractors there. I'm really proud of our team. I think that we're doing a really good job of providing the information. We were always available after the, after the public meetings for questions, comments. We're trying to be as transparent as we can, and again, I think we're doing a really good job. You've seen, I hope you've seen the reports that we send out quarterly where construction continues to increase, and we're hitting our benchmarks as far as getting the reviews done on time, and we continue to do those next-day inspections. And so thank you for supporting our staffing needs. I think that, I'm not sure what the issue is with adopting the '24 additions of the code. As Mr. Bartholomew said, we recognized the state had a couple of opportunities for local municipalities to adopt these abilities to build three dwelling and four dwelling structures, and also building up to six stories with a single exit. Those are, those are big deals. They allow for middle housing, they allow for more affordable construction, and we sat down, my team, we sat down with ourselves and the fire department, we worked closely with Sonny Parton in the Fire Marshal's Office, and we all agreed that this can maintain a level of safety that we're comfortable with. And so.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that really thorough answer, and I think it helps to hear, you know, what kind of timeline that you're on, that these are new regulations that come out every three years, we're not adopting them every three years, that you've taken this year after it was released to go through those new regulations thoroughly. I think that's all really helpful information for council.
Last year, so again, thank you, Mayor Concanon, for supporting our budgetary line item for training. We send folks, local training, well, let me back up. It's the International Code Council. They provide an annual training. It's called EduCode. Last year I went because they had a lot of, they had a whole series of transitioning from the 2018 to the '24 edition of the codes, whether that's the residential code, the building code, the fire code, and all of the trades in between. And so to me, that shows that we're not alone in going every six years, and we're kind of on the same cycle as a lot of other communities in the nation, going from the '18 to '24, for them to actually provide training specifically for that.
And I'm out of time. I will say that I do appreciate updating codes as someone who is committed to wanting to have a more energy-efficient community, and all of these things become improved as these codes get updated. But I will pause there because I'm out of time and let others speak.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Twelve B is an ordinance to adopt the latest version of the National Electric Code with amendments and to delete the existing related sections for electricity codified at Chapter 10, Articles 10 dash 26 through 10 dash 27.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Twelve C is an ordinance to close a portion of Cherry Drive adjacent to City Block 51570 and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the adjacent property owner's second district.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Twelve D is an ordinance to close Severe Heights Road from Lancaster Drive to Wallace Drive adjacent to City Block 28900 and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the adjacent property owner's first district.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Twelve E is an ordinance to close Austin Homes Boulevard from the Austin Homes Boulevard Roundabout at South Bell Street westerly to Terminus at First Creek adjacent to City Block 07327 and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the adjacent property owner's sixth district.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Ms. Parker?
Just for this area, does it essentially create a one-way-in, one-way-out setup? Or is Austin Homes Boulevard shut down altogether?
Mr. Bentley?
So this is currently an unbuilt right-of-way. As we were originally master-planning, we thought this was going to be where the road was going to be located. Through further planning, site planning, and also the acceptance of the Reconnecting Communities Grant, which provided some funding to really vision the park in that area, that will not be the location of a drive. So this is really just a closure. We opened, and now we're closing. We made a mistake on the front end, thinking that our planning was going to be this, and it's not.
Oh, man, I wish I had a better sense of what we're talking about now.
Yeah, so.
I thought we, I thought we did.
Do you know where the roundabout is, right in the middle of the site?
Yeah.
Okay, so there, if you look into the field there, there's nothing. It's just a field. That will currently, that will become open space and some connectivity, but it's going to be a slightly different plan from what we had originally thought.
Okay, so it's not a current road?
It's not a current road.
Okay, thank you.
Everything that's built out stays as it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Twelve F is an ordinance to change the street name of a portion of Richard Street between Bernard Avenue and May Avenue to Vivid Lights Street, City of Knoxville, applicant sixth district.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion?
I'm just curious as to what that changed, what began that change?
Yeah, the short answer is that when there's a break in the road, E911 likes to have a distinct, distinct name. But let's see, I think Director Amy Brooks can provide a little more detail. Ms. Brooks?
Yes, Amy Brooks, Knoxville County Planning. Yes, this request came from the city's technical services because of that break that the mayor just mentioned, and so that's why the new name was suggested. Does that answer your question? The name, so how we handle these is we do petition the existing property owners for name suggestions, but we also provide name suggestions. And so we allow them to select from up to three choices, and this was one of the, this name was suggested by a property owner, and so it was the one that was selected.
Councilmember Parker?
But they didn't share what, where the inspiration came from for the name?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I could ask our addressing staff, but.
Curious.
If you find out, let us know. Yes, I'll let you know.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Twelve G is an ordinance. Twelve G is an ordinance to amend the Knoxville City Code, Penix B zoning code, Article 2.3 definitions, to add contractors or trade persons' business to the definition of industrial craft, City of Knoxville applicant six, oh, all districts.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Twelve H is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 800-818-820, 900-906-910, and 912 Hollywood Road, and 4335-4341, and 4345 Apex Drive from RN1 District to RN2 District, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged. Barnes Capital Management LLC, applicant sixth district.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Twelve I is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 9721 Cheryl Boulevard from OP to CH1, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged. Jim Fritz Apex Bank, applicant second district.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Twelve J is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 9905 Cheryl Boulevard from OP District to CH1 District, leaving all special purpose and overlay district unchanged. Benjamin C. Mullins, applicant second district.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Twelve K is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 525 Portland Street and Zero Booth Street from IG District to IMU District. Joe E. Petrie, applicant sixth district.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion?
I do.
Oh, Council, I mean, Councilmember Fugit, yes. Thank you.
I'm not in my normal seat.
Yes.
Now I appreciate Ms. Ryder's issues with this seat. All kidding aside, Mr. Petrie, could you please come just to answer a burning question as someone who loves old things? Please express to me the intent of that beautiful historic building that's been redeveloped. You're not going to, the owners of this property don't intend to tear that down, do they?
Joe Petrie, 900 South Gay Street, 37902. First of all, thank you for your support on our pilot. We could not have done this project without it, so we will actually proceed tomorrow. But to answer your question, Councilwoman, no, we represent a purchaser, and the property is for sale, has been for some time, and there is no intent to tear it down. It would only be a use of the property, a reuse of the property, an enhancement of the property, and potentially an addition to it. So yes, I have done much historic rehab.
I know.
And it loved the building. It's a wonderful building.
I felt confident that was not the intent, but I would like that publicly stated because when people see rezonings of historic buildings, that is always the concern, is a demolition permit going to be pulled next?
It's a gem in our community, and we would hope to preserve it. It is for sale, and so it's under contract. That's kind of all I can say, but it is a wonderful project.
Okay. We'll have a side conversation. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, there's no one signed up for public forum, so without objection, this meeting is adjourned.